Are we live? Well, hello and welcome to Ward Six Picks, a debate between the two candidates for OKC City Council Ward Six, which runs south of Northwest 23rd Street bordered by I-235 on the east and Portland Avenue on the west, representing about 84,000 people. It covers the Capitol Hill area where we are here tonight in the lovely Yale Theater. And it runs south all the way to about southwest 59th Street. Tonight's debate is between incumbent Councilwoman JoBeth Hammond and challenger Merrick Cornet. Let's give them a quick round of applause. Thank you so much for being here. That's the last time I'm going to ask you to clap until we get the end of round one. My name is Trace Savage. I'm the editor in chief of nondoc.com. We're an online journalism publication based here in Oklahoma City. And I'm here to moderate this debate, which is being streamed live on nondoc's Facebook page and on nondoc's YouTube page. That's N-O-N-D-O-C. Check out your noozy koozy if you need to look that up and share that for folks. The Oklahoman is a partner for tonight's debate. They'll lead up fact checking efforts if that's necessary. So candidates, we will know if there's any exaggerations in the answers. I want to offer a special recognition to the financial sponsor to nondoc's 2023 municipal debate series, the Oklahoma Chapter of the Urban Land Institute. That's a membership based organization focused on shaping the future of the built environment for transformative impact on communities worldwide. That's a mouthful, but I almost nailed it, Reeve. There we go. Okay, thank you, ULI, for your interest in public debates. I guess I asked you to clap again already. Since we are in public, I do ask that folks turn off their cell phones. But when you're doing that, feel free to share this on Facebook. We also have a tweet at nondoc media of the YouTube livestream. You can share that as well. Hopefully, we all have good audio. I'm not seeing anything in my group chat, so we're ready to go forward. I do want to say this to the audience. I philosophically strongly believe in the importance of public debates because I believe our communities can have civic, responsible conversations. So just please be respectful. Please hold your applause till the end of each round. If people are disruptive, we do have security to get them to leave. If the whole audience can't behave, we'll clear the room and add a gratuity to your tab at the bar, and we will move forward with the debate. Again, we've got it streaming live. With that, here's tonight's format. Each candidate will have a two-minute opening statement, as well as then three rounds of questions where they'll mostly have 90 seconds each to answer each question. And then we'll conclude with two-minute closing statements. We just flipped a coin like 90 seconds ago, and it came up heads. Councilwoman Hammond won that flip, and she will go first, followed by Mrs. Cornet. Councilwoman, the stage is yours.
Well, thank you so much, Trace, and thanks for this forum. My name's JoBeth Hammond. I am the councilwoman for Ward Six. And since I was elected in 2019, our world has experienced a lot of change and upheaval between the pandemic, multiple winter storms, and our community reckoning with racial and social justice. I hope that none of us are living in the same paradigm we were in 2019. Throughout these last few years, I've been proud to work alongside many in our community to amplify voices so often ignored at City Hall. But I know there is still a lot of work to be done. While we've seen how our health is dependent on our neighbors through the pandemic, I think that same principle translates to our social and civic health. When my neighbors have safe, affordable, and decent housing, that benefits me. When we prioritize investment in robust public transit, more people have a way to get to work, recreation, the other services they need in our community. When we create appropriate responses to behavioral health crises, we don't have to roll the dice when we call for help or someone else needs help. And we don't have to wonder if we're going to get the actual help we need. When we imagine safety beyond policing and law enforcement and invest in the things that address the root causes of violence, theft, and other kinds of harm, all of us benefit. I believe that when we create a community that works for people that are currently in the margins of our institutions, that benefit spreads throughout all corners of our city. I do think we've made progress on some of these issues, but as I said earlier, there's always more work to do. And I hope to continue serving on council to be a strong and independent voice to build on that progress. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. And I forgot to give you the heads up. We do have a little timekeeping situation set up there. I'm going to have them get a little light on it as we drop the lights. And our camera is over there for everybody. So housekeeping measures. Mrs. Cornet, two minutes to you for your opening statements.
All right, thank you, Trace, and thank you, nondoc and ULI, for sponsoring this event. Thank you to everybody who's here at Historic Yale Theater in Capitol Hill. And thank you to everybody who tuned in online for this important debate and conversation around our community. Oklahoma City is facing serious challenges, and that requires a serious problem solver. I'm a mother of four young children. I am a business owner, and I am also a civic volunteer. In every single role, every day, I face challenges. And if there aren't results, then I face repercussion, as you can well imagine. So I definitely want to take what I have learned through my time here in Oklahoma City to bring us together, to pull on the same rope, and create a very strong community. When political leaders work to score partisan points or spend their time talking about ideological values, we all suffer from that. If there is no collaboration, then we all suffer from that. But I see a way forward. I see a way where we can work together, where we can collaborate, where we can pull on the same rope so that we create a stronger community. Throughout my time knocking doors, I've knocked thousands of doors over the last several months. And through that time, I have gotten a lot of feedback on what communities want and need. And a lot of that is that they would like new representation so they feel valued, so that they feel represented, and so that they feel responded to. I am willing to step into that role, and I would love to take on the challenge. I would appreciate, if any of you are Ward Six voters, I would appreciate your vote on February 14th.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to our first round of questions tonight titled Democracy and Bureaucracy. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer each question, and we will rotate who answers first. Councilwoman Hammond, first question is for you. You're running for reelection after your first term in office. Imagine this is a giant elevator, and you have a 90-second elevator pitch for folks. What is the most important thing you have done over the past four years in office?
Gosh, that's a big question. I think one of the things that I've really strived to do, I don't think I always meet it as much as I would like, is being responsive to emails and phone calls, outreach that I receive through social media with concerns that people have, particularly at City Hall. As if, and nobody knows, we are not paid full-time, so I do have limited time to do that. But I strive to always get back to folks as timely as I'm able and either get them an answer that might not always satisfy their full question, but help educate them on the next steps of what they can be doing, who they can be working with to achieve those goals, or make sure that those questions get to the right staff member. And I think that ability to help educate our citizens, our residents, about how city government works and have somebody who's willing to have those conversations is the root of being able to achieve those other things that I've been proud to be able to do.
Thank you very much. This is still the first question, but Mrs. Cornet, let me pose you the other side of that coin. Why specifically did you decide to run for this office at this time?
I'm running for office because our current representation seems to have lost sight of the fact that collaboration and working together with other city council members is the way to get things done.
So let me give you 45 seconds, Councilwoman, if you'd like to respond to that. This is a debate. We do it a little different than a forum. If somebody says something like that about their opponent, I'd like to give you a chance to respond. 45 seconds.
I have collaborated with other city council members. You know, I always have an open door to sit down with a city council member to talk about issues or talk about goals that we might be able to work on together. I think one really good example, someone who is probably ideologically very dissimilar from me, is Councilwoman Bradley Carter. When I learned he was interested in the urban hen conversation, we sat down and were able to work together on getting that passed. You know, I think if folks aren't interested in working on certain issues, I would just question, or having collaboration on those issues, I would question if those are actual priorities for them.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Cornet, anything?
I've had conversations with all of the city council members, all of the sitting city council members, other than the ones that she regularly aligns herself with, and that is not the case. They regularly mention that she hasn't had conversations with them or pulled them into any kind of meeting to discuss anything, and that they have tried to approach her, and that is not what is possible.
Councilwoman, I'm going to give you final 30 seconds to, you know, respond.
I have actually reached out to other city councilors to ask them about working on issues together and have either not had my phone calls answered or been told, yes, you can work on that if you'd like. So the times that other council members have approached me, and I expressed that I was not interested in working on those issues, was when it was around criminalizing homelessness.
Thank you very much. Okay. Second question of the night, we'll start with Mrs. Cornet. For this question, please provide two answers for me. What is the biggest issue specifically facing Ward Six? And what is the biggest issue facing Oklahoma City as a whole? 90 seconds to you.
I think those are going to be very similar answers. Human health and public safety are what I hear on the doors as I'm knocking over and over again. People want solutions. They want action taken to help our unhoused community. They want action that is going to support that community, get them in housing as soon as possible, and also provide any kind of substance abuse or mental health services as well. Infrastructure is another big one. But public safety is the second most talked about, making sure that people still feel safe in their own neighborhoods, and they deserve that.
Thank you very much. 90 seconds, Councilwoman. Same question. Biggest issue facing Ward Six specifically, biggest issue in the city?
Yeah, I mean, the main concern that I hear when I'm out on doors is around homelessness. And to me, that cuts to the core of affordable housing. If we're going to talk about homelessness, we have to talk about affordable and attainable housing that is decent and safe. So many apartment buildings empty in the ward. People ask, you know, why is that apartment building falling down? And there are people living there. It doesn't look good. It doesn't feel good for the neighborhood. And unfortunately, you know, this issue has not been on the radar of our city to prioritize for a long time. And so, but I do think it's become an issue that the city council is more interested in prioritizing. And I think that has come from those conversations out in the community on the doors, people calling their council members and telling them what they want to see for the city. And it is not letting our neighbors go without when so many other sectors of the community seem to be doing just fine. So I think, you know, if I was put it in one sentence, it would be affordable housing.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Our next question involves the built environment. If you spell built sideways, you get ULI, which again is our financial sponsor that allows us to rent this facility. This is my favorite question of the night. It's a traffic toss-up. There's no order. Whoever wants to go first, each of you gets 30 seconds. What is the worst and most pressing street sidewalk stoplight or overall transportation issue facing Ward Six? What irritates you most as you drive, walk, bike, take the bus? 30 seconds. Who wants to go first?
So many of our intersections, I don't know, I can't come up with one off the top of my head because there's so many going through my head, but are kind of no man's lands, no men's lands. You know, I was actually going to the Almonte Library on Friday and had to cross 59th and Penn on foot. And so many of those are so impossible for folks to cross if they are elderly, pushing a stroller, and they cannot get across them safely. So I think making our intersections more pedestrian friendly is generally, to me, one of the biggest infrastructure issues that we have.
Wonderful. 30 seconds. Mrs. Cornet, same question to you. What's the biggest nightmare?
Sure, right now, I think it is, if you're a driver, it's the intersection of I-40 and Western. If you are doing anything else, if you are riding your bike or using a sidewalk, it's our lack of connectivity and our lack of a network that is thought out, but it's not implemented yet. And so just sidewalks that lead to nowhere, or even bike lanes that end.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I experienced that I-40 and Western issue on the way here. I was very confused what the issue was. Personally, I just can't believe the stoplights aren't synced up in a way that makes traffic more efficient. But this is not about my thoughts. Councilwoman, next question is for you, I believe. Let me make sure I didn't lose my place. The city budget for public transportation and parking is about $32 million. And so I've got two questions first, and I think it goes well to you. Is Oklahoma City's public transportation system meeting the needs of our community? And secondly, do you view the existing OKC streetcar as a success or a failure? And would you support expansion of the streetcar?
So, yes, I think our public transit is not fully meeting the needs of residents. As somebody who uses the bus regularly, I can tell you, and was literally almost late because the bus was late, running a little bit behind. You know, one of the things that I've really been interested in seeing, and I know I've talked with city staff about this, and it's something they are working on, is working to get us to a grid system versus the hub and spoke system we have, where almost every route has to go downtown and touch the downtown transit hub to then go back out through the city. Whereas if we could have those connectivity along the grid system, we could vastly improve efficiency of service for people that rely on that service. I think the streetcar has been a success for what its purpose is, which in my mind is for tourists and folks that are going around downtown. I live downtown and rarely use the streetcar because I can walk faster typically. I think for it to be more effective, it does need to connect to other neighborhoods, but it is not my biggest priority as far as improving our transit system as a whole.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Cornet, same two questions to you. Is OKC's public transportation system meeting the community needs? And second, do you view the OKC streetcar as a success or failure? And would you support expansion?
I actually agree with her on both of those points. Our transit system has a long way to go. Ridership does need to increase for us to be able to offer more frequent routes and more. But also, that's chicken and egg, right? But I do think that making sure that we do have connectivity through our bike lanes and our sidewalks is a long way to go. I am currently, I don't know if you all know this, but I am currently an Oklahoma City Traffic Commissioner, so I see a lot of issues that exist because we have been a car-dominated society. And that does not mean that that is the way that we have to move forward. Giving people options and opportunity is certainly a way to make things a lot more equitable. One of the ways that I think a benefit that we could offer for our transit riders would be to make that a free service. A lot of cities provide free transportation through their bus. That would also extend to the streetcar as well. And to answer the question with the streetcar, success or failure, that is, I agree with her as well. There are, it does what it's supposed to do. It's supposed to connect a busy district to another busy district. For visitors to Oklahoma City is absolutely wonderful. For people who are looking to use it as a mass transit system, it does not function like that.
And thoughts on expanding it, yea, nay?
I do think we could expand it a little bit farther out. I would love to actually see something, whether that is the streetcar or a train line, go to the fairgrounds. We have a pretty big direct connection that's a train line that's from the fairgrounds into downtown and bringing all of those tourists that are there. I mean, there are millions of people who come there every year, and bringing them into downtown would only benefit our society.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Cornet. This second question, this next question is for you as well. If elected to the OKC City Council, for you as well. If elected to the OKC City Council, you could be faced with voting on a new proposed building code regarding what some cities will call an ADU, which stands for accessory dwelling unit. You know, the little house on the back of a property that you might rent out or have a family member live in. Currently, constructing an ADU requires a special zoning permit, but a proposal could make ADUs a right of ownership for R1 residential lots. Some neighborhood leaders oppose the idea, not in my backyard, but other people say that as America deals with a housing crisis, it's hard to argue with the notion that more housing equals more housed people. So my question to you is, would you support OKC homeowners having an inherent right on R1 zone properties to build an ADU on their property?
100%. I think that that is, when we repealed that back in, I think it was the 70s, it used to be available. There are many of our historic neighborhoods who currently have them. But if they burn down or something like that, you can't replace them at this point in time. So being able to add density and create a lot more housing options that are generally on a lower end price-wise, that are a lot more affordable for people, that is a no-brainer. I think that that should 100% be something we adopt.
Councilwoman, 90 seconds to you. Same question. Do you support that as an inherent right for R1 homeowners?
Yes, I do. However, I don't think it's like a silver bullet for affordable housing. You know, I think removing that restriction is helpful to get a little more density, put some units on the market. But in general, we need to be doing a lot more to really, truly open up accessibility and affordability for folks. But I don't see any reason why ADU should not be fully legal.
Thank you. Councilwoman, you brought it up. Everybody's talked about homelessness in both the debates we've done this year. What, what would be a broader city plan toward addressing affordable housing and issues like that? 30, 45 seconds to you, and I'll give the same to Mrs. Cornette.
Yeah, I think in general, you know, we've just really defunded and kind of left affordable housing by the wayside in the last 40, 50 years as public housing moved to a voucher system. And that voucher system is very easy for private landlords, private property owners to deny. And so the concentration of folks that rely on those, those resources only does them a disservice, and I think it does the whole community a disservice. So I think one of the things I'm really interested in seeing is in our next geo-bond proposal, having essentially gap funding opportunities for developers to utilize, but that would require mixed-income housing developments, whether they're mixed income for a single family to be in neighborhoods that are more affluent, or multi-family throughout the city.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Cornette, 30, 45 seconds to you.
Sure. So from the time that I have worked for nonprofits here in Oklahoma City, I actually have learned a lot about the, the issues that our unhoused community face, as well as the fact that it's a very layered issue that does require affordable housing to be available. What makes me nervous about punting that to the geo-bond is that geo-bond is not voted on until 2026. It's not, or 2027 potentially. And then it's not funded for several years. So we're looking at a decade plus. We need short-term and long-term solutions for affordable housing now. That means requiring our developer to work within the systems that we currently have, but actually working with them on what makes sense for them, as well as what makes sense for the city, and providing our, our unhoused community with more options.
Thank you very much. That's the end of round one. Give them a round of applause. Great answers, good substantive discussion. Thank you. Also, a good time to again share that tweet or Facebook stream of the livestream. It'll be up later as well. People can watch it. We'll move on to round two, which is titled "The Proper First Response." And I forgot to write any intro to it, so we'll just get right into the questions. I'm going to go to Ms. Cornet, Mrs. Cornette, on the first question. Oklahoma City's ambulance services contract with IMSA, a public trust, has faced significant scrutiny owing to IMSA's failure to meet certain response time metrics over the last couple of years. It's a little better now. I looked today. But some people believe the OKC Fire Department should take over EMS services in response. What is your understanding of IMSA's issues? And would you prefer to stick with IMSA or move the contract to the Fire Department?
I have actually heard about this issue through the Fire Department during a meeting with the, with the Fire Department. And so the current issue, like Trace mentioned, is that service is not being responded to quickly. So firefighters are getting there, and the majority of them are paramedics. And so they're administering services, and they cannot leave until IMSA gets there to relieve them of their duties. So they're there sometimes for 45 minutes, an hour before an ambulance arrives. I don't know the exact solution. I think that firefighters are, they have it in their, in their will to actually be supportive and to help people as much as possible. If we need to provide more funding so that they can take over IMSA, and they are willing to do that, then I say by all means, give it a shot. I don't think that we need to keep a contract with IMSA. That is not in the best interest of our citizens.
Councilwoman, same question to you. 90 seconds. What's your understanding of IMSA's issues? And would you prefer to stick with IMSA or change that to the Fire Department?
Yeah, I know one of the issues that IMSA has faced is the, the hiring and retention of folks that are EMTs. It's a long onboarding process, as you might imagine, because there's a lot of training that they have to go through. And it's a hard and difficult job. So more folks have, especially in the last few years with the pandemic and all of the stress that is put on our medical system, a lot of folks have left. And so there's this gap for IMSA in particular to, and to, to be able to fill those positions and make sure they have the right coverage. I wouldn't be opposed to the Fire Department taking over that contract and providing those services because they are very well-trained, they are great at what they do. But I do, I want to listen to the Fire Chief, and what he has expressed to us as of now is that he's happy to continue to work with IMSA, kind of work through those issues, create some opportunities where our firefighters could go, do contract work with IMSA during, when they're not on shift, and as, and then IMSA working through all that training and onboarding of their staff to try to, to staff back up. But yeah, I would not be opposed to the Fire Department taking that over. But I do want to make sure that the chief is supportive of that.
I appreciate it. This question will go to you as well, Mrs. Hammond, to start. During its January 3 meeting, the OKC City Council held a vote on a collective bargaining agreement with the local Fraternal Order of Police. Prior to the vote, you and Ward 7 Councilwoman Nikki Nice and Ward 2 Councilwoman James Cooper left the horseshoe and did not ultimately cast a vote. Why did you decide to leave as opposed to cast a yes vote or a no vote in that manner?
So the last, I think, two years, I have voted no on that contract, either as the sole person or one of a handful of people. And the core reason that I have voted no on that contract is that I think that the city does not ask enough in our FOP, Fraternal Order of the Police, contract to hold bad actors accountable when they abuse their power. We have not fully bargained, I think, what the city could be, could have the authority over to hold those folks accountable, to move forward reforms. This year, they negotiated a pay raise and got, the city got almost nothing out of it. I, for the last two years, have sat on the horseshoe and voted on that and explained my reasons. And this year, I just sort of felt like I've said my piece. I don't need another attack on social media where the FOP specifically targets me and has people reach out to me and hurl awful, awful things into my inboxes. So I decided that I can either sit here, do the same thing I've done for the last three years, or maybe change the conversation by stepping out and maybe that'll get some peo-, other people's attention in a different way. So we can hopefully do it different in the future.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Cornette, 90 seconds. Kind of two questions to that. Do you feel like the city asks enough in the contract for the FOP? And how would you have voted? Would you have voted yes, no? Would you have abstained? What is your position?
Sure. I think that everybody in Oklahoma City deserves to feel safe in their neighborhoods. I do, I, I've spent a lot of time learning more about our police department, as it is the largest budget item that is part of our city budget. And so I've, I've met with the chief, I've gone on a police ride-along, I've gone to the training and the recruitment facility to learn more about their procedures and their processes. I, I would have felt comfortable voting yes for that. More importantly, skipping a vote, in my mind, is, is not representing your constituents at all.
Thank you. Real quick, Councilwoman, do you have 15 seconds in response to what she said? Or we can, I have another question for her, if you want me to go that route.
Whenever I vote no on something, or in this case, the only time I've skipped a vote intentionally, I always post about it and I explain why. And so I feel like I'm still open to the conversation about, and, and being transparent about why I've made the decision I've made. And again, I didn't know if I could really take that. More attacks in my inbox this year. So again, I guess I got that anyway, but felt like maybe doing something different would get other people's attention in a different way.
Thank you very much. I have the next question for you, Mrs. Cornette. Some cities, and I sort of previewed it when I asked, kind of, do you think we're doing enough as a city to ask, you know, in that contract discussion? But some cities around the country have created new programs to have certain 911 calls involving mental health and other issues trigger response from non-police employees, such as social workers, councillors. Should Oklahoma City establish an alternative response team for mental health crises? Or should the city continue to rely solely on OKCPD to respond to all of those types of calls?
Absolutely. They should have an alternative response. And in talking with the Chief of Police, he is on board with that. He is excited about that. I think that that is an absolutely beautiful solution that's working in many cities.
Councilwoman, same question to you. Thoughts on the idea of a different kind of response? And what might that look like?
Well, I don't know if it's a secret, but yes, I agree that we should have other folks respond to crises in the community. I actually did get, finally worked out on my schedule to get to tour the 911 center on Tuesday to learn more about our dispatch system. Because specifically, while we are in the process of hiring or contracting with an outside group to potentially respond to some calls, my concern is that the system is still very reliant on police officer discretion to contact that kind of alternative response and appropriate response. So my hope is that we can actually build into our systems, as someplace like Denver and Eugene, Oregon have done, where when the dispatcher picks up the phone to call the right response, they have a direct line to a myriad of first responders. And it has not been my experience that all of our city staff are interested in prioritizing this. In my opinion, it's moved very slowly. And, and I think part of that is not recognizing where in, in the systems we need to make those changes, because they are harder changes to make. And I recognize that. But learning on Tuesday that there wasn't really a directive coming down that we really needed to dig into those specifics and look at, how are we setting up our dispatch areas to be able, and training people appropriately to make those, make the call of what kind of responders should go to, in my mind speaks to the need for a stronger voice on council to make sure that we're keeping that top of mind.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to keep going into the questions. Councilwoman, this next one goes to you first. About 20% of Oklahoma City residents identify as Hispanic or Latinx with the US Census Bureau. Currently, the OKCPD's internal directive is for officers not to inquire about immigration status in most situations. Is this in the policy appropriate? Sorry, let me rephrase that. So here, is this policy appropriate? Or should OKCPD be more proactive regarding immigration inquiries and reports to the federal Immigration and Customs Enforcement?
I am fully okay with any city staff members not questioning somebody's citizenship status or legal status in the, in our country. In my mind, it just degrades trust with the institution of the city. And I think we could go even further to address things like helping folks attain their citizenship, if that's something they're interested in. When, if they are, say, the victim of a crime, making sure that they have all the support that they need to both recover from the harm that they experienced, but also work with them to, because if you are the victim of a crime and you cooperate with the legal system, you can have that essentially put in as part of your application packet, if you will. I know that's not probably the right language. But right now, we don't approve a ton of those. And I think we can be doing better by building trust with that community and helping them work towards citizenship when they're interested in it.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Cornette, the same question to you. 90 seconds. Is that an appropriate policy currently? Or should OKCPD be more proactive in attempting to determine if people are undocumented?
I think it's the, it's a perfect response. We actually, creating trust within that community and making sure that they feel safe to call the police if they are ever in distress is paramount. We need to make sure that our neighbors feel safe. We need to make sure that they have an appropriate response whenever they do call the police. And it's a, it's a federal issue. Immigration is a federal issue. That's not something that we should be meddling in at the, at the local level, especially if it degrades that trust.
Thank you very much. That's the end of round two. We'll give them another good round of applause. Thank you so much for the good conversation. The bar will be open after we finish the debate, right? So no need to get up right now. We're getting to our third round. Our third round is titled "The Political Arena," where we will discuss key elements of this Ward 6 race and other political matters in OKC. First, I've got a hand raiser question, yes or no. If in some future hellscape, we need to have a mayoral election, and one of, either of you decide to run for mayor, would you agree to participate in a public debate like this so voters could hear from you on important topics? Yay? Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure. Great. Now let's talk sports. Mrs. Cornette, this will go to you first. The Oklahoma City Thunder are putting an exciting product on the floor this season. Again, this title is "The Political Arena" of round three. And the city council will likely consider placing some sort of financial proposal before voters by the end of the year regarding a new arena. A new arena could cost between half a billion dollars and a billion dollars. And public funding of sports arenas is controversial around the country. However, the specific details of the new OKC arena proposal have not been ironed out yet. So tell us, one, what is your favorite Thunder player's name? And two, what should this proposal look like? Should the public foot the entire bill and own the arena? Should team owners build a private arena with private financing? Or should the public and the team be asked to fund a new arena together in a public-private partnership?
Can I start an SGA chant? Or, all right, Shay. Shay's my favorite. Yeah, I see some hands raised back there. So Shay is my favorite player, for obvious reasons. Our Oklahoma City Thunder are, are just, I mean, they have been such an institution here. They have been such an amazing addition to our city. Having a sports team here helps Oklahoma City's identity. It also helps our, our sales tax base, right? However, I also understand that having this proposal come before us, it can't just be the city's footing the bill for this. In past maps, citizens of Ward 6 have voted, not unanimously, but overwhelmingly to support infrastructure investment for these types of projects. And I would love to see what we can come up with. I will be a voice who is trying to make this the fairest that it can possibly be for the citizens of Oklahoma City to vote on, whenever that does hit the ballot.
So just to be clear, you are saying that any arena proposal needs to include public money that we would vote on as a city, but also it must, you think it should include private investment as well?
I think it should include both, and I think it probably will. Traditionally, that's what we can, we can look for.
Okay. Councilwoman, same question to you. Favorite Thunder player? Or, and what does the proposal need to look like in your mind?
Well, I'm not a huge sports fan, so I usually just follow the headlines. I know he's not with us anymore, but I always enjoyed Steven, seeing Steven Adams' face in, in photos, and so the, the good energy that he brought, and of course, the great mural that is, I think, still with us, fingers crossed. So I mean, yes, as you mentioned, economists have done the studies, they've, you know, put the, put the information out that by and large, publicly funded arenas and stadiums don't financially return for, for cities. And, and I think that when we say things like voters have overwhelmingly approved- And, and I think that when we say things like voters have overwhelmingly approved, we have to think about who, what options they really had before them. I think the fact that there is a criticism of this speaks to frustration of our community that they're not seeing the benefits that they were fully promised trickle down to them, or they're being told you have to wait a little bit longer to get the things you need in your neighborhood addressed. I can't say I'm fully opposed to some public funding being part of, of a, of a new arena if that should take place. But I think that we need to be thinking about what real, solid public benefit can we get from it by negotiating some kind of community benefits agreement, or even requirements for making sure that staff working in those spaces have full and thriving wages.
Thank you very much. Second question of this round is to Councilwoman Hammond. In this race, tens of thousands of dollars have been spent by third-party organizations on advertising against you and in support of your opponent. What do you think has spurred this advertising barrage against you? And if you are reelected, is there any action you could or would propose to the city council requiring more transparency or limiting third-party influence in local elections?
Well, I'd love to talk with our legal counsel about what the city is able to do. Unfortunately, I think a lot of that happens in state statute. And I do know that there are some state legislators who have proposed a little bit, some, some statute changes that would provide for more transparency requirements. The thing that I've come to in trying to understand these ads and the wild amount of money that is being spent, that in my, every time I see the numbers, I think about all the other amazing things we could do in our community, that there's a status quo in our city, specifically at City Hall. There's a culture of go along to get along, and I don't do that. I ask questions, I think critically, and I am not afraid to criticize institutions and systems that are not serving our residents fully. And even if that means I'm sometimes the only one, or one of a handful. And, and I think that though, that status quo doesn't like those questions being asked, because that means more people are paying attention to the way the city works, and that threatens some interests, and, and they, they would rather not see that taking place in City Hall.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Cornet, 90 seconds. To you, how do you think this large amount of money that is supporting you and opposing your opponent, where did this come from? What is the reason? Why, why are you the person that they want to support? What?
Well, I will say that NoIE so far has supported me. They've only...
Apologies if I...
Yes.
Fact-check me, please.
Yes, yes. NoIE, so far, nobody has put any money towards sending out anything on my behalf or doing any ads on my behalf. They have only done that against my opponent. I will say that I, just like everyone probably in this room, I think that dark money, I would love, I would absolutely love if we didn't have any money in politics at all. That's not the world that we live in. And until there are regulation changes, then at this point, it's still considered dark. And so I don't have any, I'm, according to an article today, I know who is responsible for some of the ads that are going out there right now, but until then, I had no idea. I cannot legally work with any of those independent expenditures, which means that any kind of commentary, any kind of verbiage that is used, I have no control over, which as somebody who really likes to hone in a message, that, that makes me uncomfortable, and it has since, since all of that started.
Thank, thank you very much. We'll need to just keep it, we've got a couple more questions, then we're good to go. We'll make it through. Mrs. Cornet, the next question is for you. My understanding and observation is that, that both of you have received some significant threats and personal criticisms during your time in politics. I know politics is serious business, but I see some things that are said about both you, and I, I can't help but note that you're both women, and I don't know whether people feel more comfortable saying things in that regard, and that's, you know, certainly wrong, in my opinion. That aside, here's my question. Has civility become too dirty of a word? And where is the line between appropriate and inappropriate political exuberance?
Yeah, that's a tough question. I think there are some people who think that whenever you run for office, you're exposing yourself to what comes with that, which means that you're exposing yourself to attacks, both publicly and privately. And I've gotten my fear share of both. I've pretty much gotten off of an entire social media network, because I can't say anything there without it being disparaged. And I really, I don't know. I think that we have, we have really gotten to an extreme place where the, there is a crowd that likes to dehumanize candidates, and, I couldn't, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. But they are, are going after both of us. And I don't condone whenever my people go after her, and I would assume that she's not a huge fan when people come after me either, but I think that we have a lot of growing up to do in the public forum, so that we can actually have meaningful conversations.
Thank you very much. 90 seconds. Councilwoman, same question. Has civility become too dirty of a word? And where is the line between appropriate and inappropriate political exuberance?
I struggle with this question, because I hear a thread of it that I, that is part of, I think, what I've been attacked for, which is expressing dissent. And so I don't think just expressing dissent or asking questions is uncivil. I think what I see in my mentions is name-calling, attacks on my appearance, these sort of personal attacks that, that to me is the line. It's not questioning a policy of mine. I have people that comment on my Facebook and say, "I don't agree with XYZ," and we have a back and forth, and I think that's great. But, but I think for me, the line is, is when it becomes about, about, it goes beyond the policy and the just critical questions and dissent. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Well, I love questions and I love good conversations, so, and this crowd has been great tonight. I really appreciate you guys. Next question I have going to you first, Councilwoman. For whatever variety of reasons, your reelection effort in Ward Six has become sort of a litmus test for OKC's recent shift toward more progressive representation in, in elements of government. If reelected, do you think it's possible to find more common ground and better relationships with groups like the Chamber of Commerce and the Fraternal Order of the Police that, you know, maybe have, have not supported you and maybe in more support of your opponent? Or is that an unreasonable idea, given the current political environment?
I find it interesting to hear the idea that's, that I don't have common ground with the Chamber of Commerce, when I've never heard from them about anything they disagree with me about. So that comes as a surprise. I think I've shown myself to be continually open to conversations. I call people back who have yelled at me on a voicemail or typed in all caps in an email. And so I think I'm always open to the conversation, but that doesn't mean that I'm going to just fully agree. With the Fraternal Order of the Police, if we're going to talk about negotiating with extremists or not wanting to, they are one of the most extreme groups in our country. They have some of the most power to wield in this country, and the things they do with it are protect bad actors that abuse their power and hurt people in our community. It's hard for me to imagine, it's hard for me to imagine finding common ground with folks that, that say something like, "public safety equals policing," because I don't think a lot of people believe that. I think that a lot of people recognize that true safety comes not from surveillance and policing, but from wholeness and healthy communities and access to the things we need to meet our day-to-day needs.
Thank you very much. Well, we're running ahead of time, so, you know, we can have a little clapping. Mrs. Cornet, I've got another 90 seconds. Same question, but I'm going to phrase it a little differently to you from a different perspective. I think a lot of progressive folks view Councilwoman Hammond as an important voice outside the establishment, who is unafraid to talk about things like police violence, feminine hygiene product access, a lot of other issues that maybe other politicians don't put at the forefront sometimes. How do you respond to the criticism that your campaign aims to return more power to the city's historic establishment influencers?
Sure. You can ask my husband, you can ask my mom, you can ask anybody who has ever worked with me. It is laughable when people say that I will be an empty suit. I am, I am far from it. I definitely have my, my values. I definitely have my own way of doing things. I do not by any means subscribe to any single person or any single organization who has supported me in the past. I do not believe that the city council should obstruct economic development, especially when we have economic development fund. I think that's probably why you're not hearing from the Greater Chamber of Commerce. I don't think that we should decrease the funding for our police. I think we need to have competitive pay for those positions if we want great police officers. But I also know that we need to hold them accountable to how they are spending those funds. And that is a priority of mine, is to make sure that not only are we supporting them, but that we are being thoughtful in that support, and that we are holding them accountable to that support. And any organization that we're working with, you could say the same about the Oklahoma Municipal Contractors Association, or any of the other groups that have thrown support behind me. It is important that we make sure that they have at the table, but we are also communicating with them, bringing them in, and having conversation and thoughtful conversation with them to make positive change in our community.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman, I'd like to offer you 60 seconds. She's, hey, we were doing so good. We are almost done. The bar is still open, just give me a minute. Councilwoman, I want to give you 60 seconds. She kind of hinted at, at your record regarding, I'm not even sure if I remember what it was, but, you know, investment zones or something. 60 seconds if you wanted to respond to maybe a little bit of criticism.
Sure. I'm struggling to think of a time when I obstructed any business development, given that I'm usually in the minority on, when we vote on those sorts of things. I, my recollections that I've asked questions about who benefits from those. Are we getting the most benefit for people? Particularly, one of my greatest criticisms has been that, you know, just the idea, or not even a criticism, the thing that I've wanted to see and ask questions about is why shouldn't the state, the capital city of the state with that is the largest incarcerator in the world, not require in job incentive, job attraction funds? Why should we not require them to not ask about felony history that is not relevant to a job? Costco stood in front of us and said, "Well, in states where that's required of us, we follow that law." But in states where it's not, they don't. So I don't think I've been obstructing anything. I think I've been asking thoughtful questions about how we make sure that more people are benefiting from those dollars.
Councilwoman, I mean, I'm sorry, Mrs. Cornet, in fairness of time, 60 seconds if you needed to close that out.
Sure. I think that obstruction doesn't necessarily mean that you voted it down. I think that that definitely can, it has a place in you voting against something that would bring high-paying jobs to the city of Oklahoma City.
Councilwoman, 15 seconds, anything? Okay. Round of applause, now we can do it. There we go. Ah, yeah, there you go. I knew you wanted to. We're going to go to our closing statements. They have up to two minutes each, and we'll go in the same order that we did before. Councilwoman Hammond, two minutes for closing statements.
Thank you. Since I was sworn in in April of 2019, I have represented Ward Six on the Oklahoma City Council with my whole heart. During that time, I've been critical of the status quo, because I know it hasn't been fully serving our neighbors to the best of our ability. I've asked for greater accountability and transparency in city spending and contracts. I've questioned increased funding for policing over investments and programming that can create truly safer neighborhoods, and I've led the conversation about transitioning to appropriate mental health crisis response. I was a champion for funds for transit, bicycle and sidewalk improvements, and housing in Before I came on city council with a handful of like-minded counselor, council members, the, those issues were hardly brought to the forefront, and that's a huge part of why I originally ran back in 2018. When I was first running back then, I was told by a prominent former city politician that I didn't need to worry about homelessness, because those people don't vote. There were very few discussions about mental health crisis response or adequate funding for truly affordable housing. And in just four years, I think we have fully changed that attitude in some areas of our city. But we obviously have more work to do. If you live in Ward Six and are watching or listening tonight, I would be honored to have your vote, so we can continue to build on that work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Round of applause is appropriate. Thank you very much. Mrs. Cornet, up to two minutes. Closing statement to you.
Almost forgot the mic. I am running again. I, I really want to work on building this city and working with others as I do that. I want this city to be as successful as possible for my four boys, for everybody who lives here currently, and everybody who is going to live here in the future. I think that there is no time to waste in creating short-term and long-term solutions and acting on those as soon as possible. Political rhetoric will get us nowhere at this point. Having votes that are performative, I would say, or even just ideological votes, that's not going to get the job done. What's going to get the job done is somebody who's getting in there and willing to work with other city council people, build those relationships back, work with organizations like the Chamber or the FOP to make sure our community is safe, make sure that we have great jobs and access to the services that we need. And I believe that I am the candidate who will make that happen. If you are voting on February 14th, I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes tonight's debate between these two candidates. Give them both a round of applause. Thank you so much for believing in public debates. Thank you to the candidates, to the Yale Theater. Here's a little tip, tip your bartenders. It doesn't cost a lot to have a little class, okay? Thank you to the Urban Land Institute of Oklahoma. Remember, Election Day is February 14th. Share this when you get home. Thank you. Good night. Roll that beautiful music.